Okay, we will go ahead with item 7.2. 2023 mid-year budget. A) Consideration of resolution amending resolution number 2022-118 to amend the fiscal year 2022/23 adopted budget by adjusting reserves, fund balance carryover, revenues, and appropriations. B) Consideration of resolution amending resolution 2022-119 to amend the position allocations for fiscal year 2022/23 to conform to the mid-year budget adjustments. And C) Consideration of resolution amending adopted budget for fiscal year 2022/23 to establish Fund 74, John T. Klaus Park, Budget Unit 7074, John T. Klaus Park. And I will turn this over to Admin.
Thank you, Board. Good afternoon, Board.
It's gonna have to be right in front of your face.
Good afternoon, Board.
Hello?
Good morning, Board. Stephen Carter, Assistant County Administrator Officer. I'm gonna actually have the presentation. I'm gonna hand it off to Leisha, our new Deputy County Administrator Officer, who is taking over the budgetary, my old position for budgetary activities.
Hello, I'm Leisha Phillips. And first of all, I'd like to thank the administrative staff, department heads, and their fiscal staff for their time and effort in completing the review of their budgets. The amount indicated, oh, I need to let you know that the amount indicated on the memorandum for this item, for the clause item, was indicated as $2 million, and at the last minute, that got changed to $1,960,000, as stated in the attached resolution. However, my apologies, this was not updated on the memorandum. Midyear is a time for all departments to look at their budgets for any adjustments needed to finish out the year. It provides an opportunity to ensure that the department is on track in revenue and expense and will have the necessary resources for the remainder of the year. This year, like most mid-year budgets, has minor changes for your review. I'd like to highlight some of the highlights. Fund 154, the Tech Modernization Reserve, is requested to be increased by $1,530,375, utilizing LATCF funds for future accounting system upgrade. We've just placed it there for a place to hold these funds until your board determines how to utilize these funds. It's not a hard deal. Budget Unit 1674, Flood Corridor Maintenance. The Maintenance Reserve is requested to be decreased by $380,000 due to a delay in grant reimbursement. This is a reversal of a $380,000 increase they did at the fiscal, the final 2223 budget. Budget Unit 4014, Behavioral Health, is requesting an increase of $85,000 in reserves to facilitate the repayment of the loan from Substance Use Disorder Services. The total loan repayment is $600,000. Also, $998,364 in reserves are being released for the Collier Avenue project. They also received $250,000 for the care court. Budget Unit 4015, Substance Use Disorder Services, is requesting $969,680 increase to reserves due to the receipt of that amount in opioid settlement funds. These funds are currently in Budget Unit 1120 and will be transferred to reserves in the Substance Use Disorder Services Budget Unit when their work plan has been developed and Budget Unit 8354, Lake O'Sand Southeast. Their reserve is requested to be decreased by $40,000 to cover the purchase of a septic collar dump station, and their ONM reserve is requested to be decreased by $438,863 to be transferred to their capacity expansion reserve in order to correct that reserve Budget Unit 1012, the Administrative Office, is requesting a transfer of ARPA funds in the amount of $199,750 to fund the Housing and Economic Development staff. As $2 million of ARPA funds had previously been allocated for housing and economic development. Four positions have been created in the Admin Office, and this is the estimated 2223 expense. In Budget Unit 1671, Buildings and Grounds, the request is to accept $62,000 from Sunrise Special Services Foundation to reimburse for utility costs at the warming center at the former juvenile hall. Budget Unit 1785, Public Safety Facilities, has a request to accept $988,600 as a contribution of federal funds via Representative Mike Thompson for the Lakeport Armory Facility repurposing project. In Budget Units 2201, 2202, and 2301, which are the Sheriff, Coroner, Central Dispatch, and Jail Facilities, they're requesting a transfer of cannabis funds under the cannabis policy for hiring and retention incentives as follows. For 2201, $50,000. For 2202, $110,000. For 2301, $325,000. The Sheriff, Coroner, Budget Unit 2201, is additionally requesting $175,000 of cannabis funds for vehicle equipment and installation of that equipment. In the Library Improvements Fund, Budget Unit 6023, there is a request to accept $1,099,667 in California Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant Program funds and a transfer of $549,835 of general fund for the matching funds. The Treasury Tax Collector, Budget Unit 1122, is requested to reduce their banking fees appropriated of $55,000 and utilize those funds for server license upgrades, $30,000, and megabyte sales tax module of $25,000. The Jail Facilities Budget Unit 2301 has requested an additional $43,139 for food and an additional $20,000 for the cell check project. Planning, Budget Unit 2702, is requested to increase their budget by $12,500 from UNICODE update utilizing District 4 discretionary funds. The Lamson Field Capital Projects Budget Unit 3123 requested to budget $109,000 from general fund for preliminary engineering for design and environmental work for the hangar project. For Staffing, Budget Unit 2201, Sheriff, Coroner, is requesting the addition of one Accounting Technician slash Accounting Technician Senior, moving that position from Budget Unit 2301. The addition of one Accountant 1-2, again, moving from Budget Unit 2301, and the deletion of four Deputy Sheriff 1-2 positions. Those are the SRO positions. Budget Unit 2301 Jail Facilities is requesting the deletion of one Accounting Technician slash Accounting Technician Senior, which is being moved to Budget Unit 2201, and the deletion of one Accountant 1-2, again, being moved to Budget Unit 2201. Budget Unit 4010 Environmental Health is requesting the addition of one Environmental Health Technician, which is a new classification for them. 4011 Public Health is requesting the addition of one Health Programs Coordinator, the deletion of one Nutrition Education Coordinator 1-2 Registered Dietitian, and the increase of the physical therapist from fourth, fifth time to full time. The Behavioral Health, Budget Unit 4014, is requesting an additional Behavioral Health Program Manager. The Substance Use Disorder Services Budget Unit 4015 is requesting the deletion of one Substance Abuse Programs Coordinator, the addition of one Staff Services Analyst 1-2, and the elimination of one Halftime Compliance Review Technician. Social Services Administration, Budget Unit 5011, is requesting the deletion of one Accounting Technician and the addition of one Social Worker 1-2-3. Budget Unit 5164 Housing Administration is requesting to change the Office Assistant allocation to Office Assistant, Office Assistant 3. For Capital Assets, the Treasury Tax Collector is requesting to purchase a megabyte sales tax module for $25,000. Public Safety is requesting an additional $988,600, which is the funds received from Representative Thompson for the Armory Project. And as previously stated, they're requesting 20,000, an increase of 20,000 for their cell check program. Their Budget Unit 2206 is requesting a reduction in their asset of $340,563 to match the funds they had available for that project. The Roads Department is requesting $17,000 for a printer plotter. Behavioral Health is requesting $130,000 for their South Shore remodel, which were funds received from the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program. Social Services is requesting $65,000 for a secure cabinet with tracking system. This is a secure key cabinet with tracking software for storage and tracking of vehicle keys and gas cards, among other items. The Library Improvements Fund, 6023, is requesting $1,619,900. This is, these are funds that they received from the California State Library Building Forward Infrastructure Grant. Museums, Budget Unit 721, is requesting a large overhead scanner in the amount of $70,000. This is a very large book scanner for being able to scan the large old books. Watershed Protection District, 8109, is requesting an increase in their appropriation for the F-250 Crew Cab Pickup of $12,350 for a total of $54,350. Lake O'Sand Southeast is requesting the $40,000 for the septic collar dump station. CSA Number 21, North Lakeport Water, Budget Unit 8481, is requesting $20,000 for a land acquisition for Pressure Zone 2 and $155,000 to upgrade the program mobile logic controller. Cal State Bull Water Works District Number 3, Budget Unit 8593, is requesting $55,000 to replace a 3/4 ton utility truck. Special District's Administration, Budget Unit 8695, is requesting handheld AMR, which is an automatic meter reading reader. Central Garage 9905 is replacing pool vehicle TO 146, $47,818. And Heavy Equipment 9908 is requesting a Ford F-350 pickup increase of $17,100 for a total cost of $59,100. And my last item is the resolution amending adopted budget fiscal year 2223 to establish Fund 74, John T. Klaus Park, Budget Unit 7074, John T. Klaus Park, in the amount of $1,960,000, due to the restricted nature of the funds received. They are requesting to increase the revenue account 9201 in the amount of $1,960,000 for private contributions and increase in appropriation to account 2380 professional specialized services at this time for $1,960,000.
Okay, thank you. So, the Board, your Board asked for forecasts, five-year forecasts, to be presented. It didn't happen in September because we got too late in the day. I did, we did attach two versions of a five-year forecast to the mid-year budget, one that is the All County Funds Forecast and one that is a General Fund Forecast. And the key to remember here is that it is just that, it's a forecast with the information we have available. So, I would like to start with the All County Funds Forecast. This includes everybody, literally all budget units, from solid waste to social services to all the general fund departments. There are a lot of unknowns in there, but, so if you look at the history, the way we projected forward for the revenues was an increase of 1%, and that's mainly for the departments who have discretionary revenue or revenue that fluctuates, not really for the state and federally funded programs that would eventually end up net zero. So, the way, the ending balance, the ending fund balance, you can see in fiscal year 1718, we had $51,710. That includes all reserves as well, so it's not just all $51 million going to fund balance available for the next year. It has all the reserves for Behavioral Health, the reserves, the multi-millions for solid waste, and all the other, and also the multiple reserves for general fund itself. And if the projections hold, the reserves and the ending fund balance would actually keep increasing by about 30 million a year. But what this doesn't take into consideration is we don't know when those reserves are gonna be used for a project, because you're generally, like in a solid waste instance, you're building it up for a project, for like the expansion project. And that, once that project goes forward, it's gonna make a big hit and go down. So, those are the kind of estimations that we aren't making, those major projects that are going to happen, but we don't know when they are. So, this would take a projection as if those don't happen until after fiscal year 2627. Now, moving to the general fund forecast, this one is a little easier to estimate because our office is deeply involved with all the budgets. So, the way you read this one, the beginning fund balance for like fiscal year 1718 is $11,199,000, and then all the revenues combined to make a total resources for that year of And then the total expenditures actual for that year were $46,312,000 and change, leaving an ending balance or FBA of $11,550,000, which is then, that's the beginning fund balance for fiscal year 1819. And before I go any further, this one is built slightly different because we know exactly where all the reserves are and in a nice little compiled section below. So, if you were looking at both All County Funds versus the general fund, if you were doing apples to apples, the $51 million includes both the $11,500,000 from the general fund forecast and the $14 million that's in reserves. But because we know very well what the reserves are, we broke them out, so you just see the standard FBA not including the reserves. As we move forward, fiscal year 2223 is where the first, we labeled that as estimated because if you put in the budgeted figure, it will look like we spent all of our funds and then there's hardly, very little for the next year's beginning balance. But as we all know, it's difficult to spend between 80 and 90% of what's actually budgeted. So, this estimated column brings it down to about that ratio of the budget. And during the fiscal year 2223, 2324, and 2425, you'll notice quite a large increase in operating expenditures, and then it goes back down for fiscal year 2526, 2627, down to relatively normal levels. The reason for that is $12 million from ARPA funds and all the other funds that are coming in from grants that we know of within the next three years. It's a large amount, and they will, so like the Armory Project, at the beginning of the year, it was part of the FBA, the fund balance available, but we have already transferred $3 million plus over to outside of general fund to 1785 where that project will be completed. That would show as an expenditure here, and it would not show as FBA for next year. So, those are the kind of projects that we know are happening and money is moving, and we expect it to come down to normal expenditures in fiscal year 2526. But it does look like we have a healthy general fund, as well as all county funds. And actually, sorry, one last thing since everybody's quiet. The very last line, the general reserves as a percent of resources, that's where during recommended in final budget, I use where GFOA, Government Financial Officers of America, the general practice, good practice is about 25%. That's where you see in 1718, it was 12%, and fiscal year 2223, we're at 16.7. So, we're getting much closer to be able to cover the 25%. And the 16% is relatively low, but think about how much revenue we had in that fiscal year. That's an abnormally large revenue year. So, that's why in fiscal year like 2526, even without increasing reserves, it jumps to almost 20%.
Supervisor Spatier?
First off, thank you for, both of you, for taking the time to meet with me and to answer some of my questions. I want to ask if you can add something to your presentation, and I'm sorry I didn't ask you about this yesterday, but I think what's important is for us to understand the health of our retail sales tax and our property taxes. How are those going as far as what were our expectations and where we stand? I'm going to say that it looks good, but I would prefer it come from somebody with a little bit more expertise than just me.
So, since I didn't prepare for that, I will say that on the general fund forecast, we are forecasting for both property tax to continue to go up by 2% or 2% to 3% per year. Even with our housing market going down, we are also still catching up on Prop eights, et cetera, that will actually make up the difference. Eventually, probably in the next few years, property taxes will level off, but I don't foresee it taking a downward turn for at least three to four years. And the reason why I say that is even during the recession, if you look at a 20-year history of our property taxes, only one or two years in that 20 years, it actually went down. So, even going through mega recessions. But flatten out, absolutely. On sales tax, over the last three to four years, obviously, it's taken quite a jump. I do expect that it will level off and actually start declining down to where we see our new normal, and I would expect that to happen around 2425, 2526. But that's what I can do without knowing ahead.
Yeah, apologize for not preparing you for that question. I just think it's important because it's the global general fund type of conversation.
I don't see either taking a nosedive.
But we're meeting expectations of what we estimated based on our budget approved on in September.
We are actually above on all counts, and that is actually being taken into consideration in mid-year where all the items that are being requested of general fund, pulling general fund dollars, there is, it's all covered by the known increases in property tax and sales tax that we didn't budget for in September. So, it's, other than one, which is the library, $549,000 match, that was known in September. We didn't budget it that time because it wasn't finalized and approved, but at that point in time, I stated that it was gonna be part of the FBA that we already had. So, that's FBA, but all the other increases are off of the increases that are already known for property tax and sales tax over budget.
So, I have a few comments that I want to make, and a lot of these, I'm looking for consensus from the Board. I'm not asking for changes today. I'm asking for things to come back to us over the next few months, or at least at the next budget hearings in June for 2324. But first, I want to start off with, right now, I know that staff is working on building and has made great headway already for the Economic Development and Housing Division, and I'm really looking forward to the day where we have a five-year, hopefully maybe even a 10-year strategic plan where we can attach some of those plans to what we're projecting coming up in the future to help us understand why there's so much in the fund balance carryover and what is planned to be done with those funds rather than just seeing a number that gets bigger. I think it helps understand things, and I think it helps to also predict what's the next thing that's gonna happen here in Lake County. So, I'm really looking forward to that. I think we're taking the right steps to get into that better place. One of the things that I was talking to the team about yesterday that I'm asking for consensus, talked about this last time, there was a little bit of a subtle but yet direct concern raised that if we do get to a, it's probably never gonna happen, but if we do get to a place of zero vacancies, 0%, that we are having to borrow money from places that, in my opinion, are one-time-use types of money, like cannabis tax. And so, I had asked during the budget that we kind of review where we were with the fiscal crisis management plan before we said to get rid of it, because part of the crisis management plan was to reduce position allocations in order to ensure that what raises we provided, we would be able to afford if we ended up at a 0% vacancy rate. Again, most likely not gonna happen, but I would rather we be there than continue to borrow and find ourselves in a place where it would be uncomfortable. So, I'd like for us to kind of have that discussion. I think that would be appropriate for budget, or anytime you feel it's appropriate between now and next budget, to kind of review what was the plan then? Is this something we can still put into play to ensure that there's not that three-year prediction that you had stated if we had gotten ourselves to a zero vacancy? I want to make sure that borrowing to continue to provide the services is not, in my opinion, a very solid prediction of the future. We need to make sure that we pivot where we need to. So, that's my one, that I'm looking for consensus, that we have that conversation. I believe we had consensus on that during the budget to have it for mid-year. I'm willing to continue the conversation and place it later, but just asking the Board again.
Well, do you just want to do zero, or do you want to look at different thresholds, like if we get to a 5% vacancy?
I'm just looking at where we are, where we're heading, and...
Yeah, let's do multiple thresholds.
Yeah.
I'll do zero, but I, within that, it's, once you have that number, it's fairly simple to do.
Yeah. Yeah, so 0, 5, 10.
Because 10 is unfortunately realistic. 20 is actual.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
My next one is, I'd like to request, because I don't see it in here, it was something that I brought up during our budget. So, we're having the regional county park and rec district conversation, and right now, there is money being accumulated by some of our partner jurisdictions, but we have $0 accumulated thus far to come to the table. And my personal opinion is if I'm gonna create a partnership and I see a partner coming to the table with $0, I don't know if I want to partner with that partner. And so, I want to make sure that we're showing we're serious, and so I'm hoping that in June, you can find $1 million to set aside to show that we're serious, that we do want to take part in this and continue that conversation with something behind us rather than just continue the conversation with words. And that's something that I'm hoping that we can find and make possible by June, and I know that we can do that. And looking again for consensus to see if we can put that on.
Is it possible to get consensus? Because that did come up in September and wasn't sure, I had a question mark next to that, whether the Board actually wanted to try to do that. So, yes.
Okay. Next is, I'll get back to that one, that one's the most difficult. I'm also hoping that sometime in the near future, we can have, and I don't know if it'll be the Auditor Controller, or I know that Ms. Phillips was working on this when she was at the Auditor Controller's Office, but kind of a breakdown of our disaster relief fund. There's some that's reserved, there's some that's supposed to be paid back to our departments, there's some that's being held just in case the state or the feds want their money back because either we weren't supposed to get the money, or we didn't do everything exactly, cross our Ts and dot our Is, like they expect everything to happen. But I'd like to get an idea because it's a large number, and it's kind of difficult to maneuver through there, and also what's there to prepare us for the next disaster as well. And just hoping that we can have that discussion to kind of break that down, because we want to be prepared, and it's a large number, and I think it's good to explain that to the public as well. And again, looking for consensus.
I would have, I would, I will talk with the Auditor Controller, Jennevieve Harrington, because that would be perfect for her June recommended budget when she's explaining her budget units, do a full review of 1920.
Okay. And then two things, one I've already kind of discussed, but I'm hoping that in a future agenda item, we can really talk about the opioid settlement, all the entirety of it, not just what we've received, because I think we need a long-term plan. And then also the LATCF, which I'm sorry, Local Agency Tribal...
Consistency Fund.
Fund.
It's just the name of the fund.
Yes, and so, I'd like to sit down, it's about $3 million, I believe, that we're going to receive, half of it in May, we've already received half of that. And I know that right now, it's not dedicated, but it's been placed under tech modernization. I don't disagree that we need to modernize some of our software that we're using, but at the same time, I'd like to have the bigger conversation about what is our priority for the entirety of the $3 million, and so hoping that we can do that, too.
And that was actually the intent. It was not to change the color from LATCF funding to tech modernization. It just, eventually, it's hard to track all the FBA numbers, $12 million ARPA, 1.5 here. It puts it in a reserve ready for when the Board has a specific project or idea for that funding, then we pull it down and either replace the funds in there with general fund or just pull it down and use it, because we have to claim that funding. So, it's, once it's used, we have to claim it, so it needs to be tracked. So it's, once it's used, we have to claim it, so it needs to be tracked carefully.
And then my last one, again, needs consensus because I think this is kind of a somewhat large undertaking, but I'm looking at the list of capital projects, capital improvements, and I'd like to better understand what is the equity of our spending of large dollars, because it gets pretty blurry in the gritty details, of what districts are we putting funds into, and is it done in an equitable way? And is there a plan maybe for long-term equity rather than on an annual basis equity? But I, it's hard for me to know and understand the equity of our capital improvements and services when compared from township to township, district to district. So I think district would probably be the easiest, and I'm looking at large things only, not nitty-gritty. I don't need to know, is code enforcement more focused on this and that? I think that gets difficult, same thing with the sheriff's office, but with the capital improvements, roads, things like that, I think it would be important for all of us to understand where the majority of it is going and is it done equitably.
Well, in the need basis, because you're looking at capital projects where there's significant need and there, you know, it's been years of putting things off, so that has to be part of it, too.
No, I think there's so many more things that could be a part of it. I mean, we could look at population demographics as well, but I think start simple, and it doesn't need, mean that it's going to guide us, but it's going to help us better understand things. And it's something I've been looking into and trying to figure out on my own, and thought I'd ask for consensus to see if that's something that staff could come back with. Again, no set date.
That one will be difficult, but doable.
I think that's a long-term win for them to work on. I'm not sure, can you do that in by June? Because there are so many variables.
They have to say yes.
And I don't have a set date. I just think it'd be something that would help us in guiding how it is that we choose to spend some of these large funds.
Because when the, the next fiscal year's budgets are submitted to admin, either the end of the first week of April or second week of April, I'm not sure, at that point, all the capital assets are known, I'm just not necessarily going to know which district they're in, so we can have conversations with the departments, try to determine which districts they're in, and, and see how, how it's going to look. Don't know yet.
Okay. I think there would have to be some scoring, too, with, you know, the shape of the capital project and the need and how long the work has been delayed.
I'm not prepared to move forward with that request at this time, so.
Okay. That's one.
You're asking for by June or by September?
I, no, no date, just, I think it's a difficult one to come up with, and I think it's going to take time, so I don't want to set a specific date. If it's possible by the end of the year, that would be great. That way, we're prepared in mid-year budget again next time, but it's something that I think eventually is needed for us to better understand where we're placing these dollars.
Hate to say it, but I would prefer a date so that there's a timeline and it doesn't get to the bottom of the pile.
Final budget, September?
I'm okay with that.
Can I just dive in, because I'm not sure what I'm consensusing to or not, just because I'm the new kid on the block? So if I can just confess a little bit of confusion and maybe follow up with what you're asking for, and I know this is just very bare bones forecasting here, this is not the full-blown budget, but is slightly different from what I encountered with the city. So to the question of the parks and rec set aside, that sounds like a capital reserves question, and I think there was a question about capital needs assessment. So I'm not seeing a, what in my mind in this breakout is a, basically a full-line item or several line items related to our capital planning or capital reserves, and to the point raised about capital needs. So on the park and rec set aside of a million, if I had a better handle of where that particular project was going in terms of capital needs, or whether the dollars might be expended for pre-planning and stuff like that, that, that weren't capital in nature, you know, that'd be okay, but the set aside to me, if it were to happen at all, would go into a capital reserve fund.
That is what he means. It would be a parks reserve.
Do we break out capital reserves separately, though? Okay. All right. And then the question on the opioid settlement, we park that money in a tech modernization fund?
Not in the SUDS budget right now in their reserves.
So the opioid is, was currently deposited in budget unit 1120, which is the depository for all general fund that doesn't have a specific budget unit attached, and mid-year is transferring it to budget unit 4015 SUDS, and then once it lands in SUDS, it's going to reserve there specifically for opioid activities, which the board would have to approve to remove it from the reserves for usage, once there's plans. The LATCF funds of little over 1.5 million, that's the funds that we are putting into the tech modernization reserve, and it's going to be tracked the whole time because it has to be claimed, and once the board has decided what we want to, you guys want to use those funds for, we'll pull it down and utilize it, or if, since we need to do a new accounting system within the next three to five years, use it for that, it would stay. Otherwise, when the board has a project, we can remove it and put it towards that project.
And then lastly, to the last ask, I think it was generally you were requesting a better roadmap of where we're at with our capital projects. I don't know exactly what you were asking for.
Capital assets by district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I support that.
So it looks like there's a consensus for that for September 20-something, whenever the final budget is.
I'm not hard on that. If you have to wait till next year, I'm good with that.
How about I will give every, we will give every effort to make it for September.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Sorry. Pen, no.
Okay. Any other board comments? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so in regard to budget 2202, I know we talked about it briefly yesterday. I'd like to, I know it's about reimbursements for approval to ensure current fill-ins or deputies, so they could be accommodated for in filling these positions, it's dispatch. And so I know we also talked about the hiring bonuses and things of that nature, and so, you know, in preparing for an anticipation of those positions being filled, can we ensure some of these, I know this is backfilling for 2021, '22, but I want to ensure that it's maintained, or if there's another discussion that needs to take place to ensure that we can provide that benefit to that department so that that way, we don't have to utilize deputies anymore? Is that a discussion we have to have, like, in general, like this, or can we have it at the next budget timeframe?
That can happen in June. The reason why is this mid-year is moving 50,000, I believe it is.
I think it's 110.
110,000 for the hiring and retention bonuses. I purposely had Mary Beth bring enough hiring bonuses over for what is actually projected through the end of June, which is what happened for hiring new employees, and that is always part of the budget for budget unit 1064 cannabis, to have a section just for hiring bonuses and retention bonuses. So it is naturally there and available, it just needs to be utilized.
Okay. And then, so thank you for that, and I apologize, Sheriff Howe, if I'm talking about your stuff, but another one is 2301 jail facilities, and this one is a little more, it's just trying to see if with the funding intact or preparing for specific funding, sorry, my, I was trying to put my, push my screen up, and it's not a push screen. For benefits, does this need to be negotiated between union reps and admin, or can it be another discussion presented for mid-year in June? Benefits meaning like, you know...
Like their 80/20 benefit they have?
Is it for like health benefits, things of that nature?
I don't think the jail facility has...
They don't have that. That would be during negotiations.
Corrections? Is that the same as corrections, or, yeah? Okay. Is that, is that something that has to be determined between the, the...
It'd be negotiations.
Okay. Yeah, just making sure.
In, in the determination out of that, when you sign an MOU or a side letter, then it goes into budget.
Okay. Just wanted to, yeah, see if that can be something to look at. That's it.
Is that it? Well, as I mentioned, during our governance meeting, we're going to have to allocate a significant amount of funding for hazard tree removal with the OES application once that's completed, and so I just, I need everybody on board with that because we are going to have a 25% match, and we're looking at many millions of dollars, and we're, we're looking at other places, but ultimately, this ball is rolling, and once that application goes through and we start doing that work, we're going to have to use that funding, and just wondering what your recommendation is for that, Stephen?
Could we use AB 297?
So there are multiple possible funding sources. Currently, there is about 1.2 million available in cannabis funds that would be able to fund it for a little while, but with the ongoing revenue for next year, it would probably be about 1.5 available. It would have to be fund balance available or cannabis at recommended and final budget time, and it's going to be a large amount, potentially in between 1 and 5 million. So that would, no one location I can find that.
Okay. And just for the board's awareness, RCD is working on a CAL FIRE grant to take care of some of this work, but that, that award would be likely midsummer and not funded until fall, and then we're also working with Congressman Thompson's office for federal funding options, but all of those are really far out, and so they will augment this and, and this work, but we have to get the work started, and so we're going to need that funding. And with last week's, as you all know, I've been working with Senator McGuire's office since last May to try and get the 25% match that CAL FIRE did provide, and then we were told no in January, but last week, the U.S. Forest Service aerial report was released and showed that tree mortality is incredibly widespread across all of California, and so I do suspect that this day is going to have to take another look at this because the counties that were impacted before and the counties that received that 25% match are back in the same boat. And although we were the first county to declare this emergency last May, and Napa and Mendocino have followed, I think we're going to see a lot of counties now that the data is out there, and I know that Supervisor Crandall was doing that work for us in DC last week. So, but, all of these things that we're doing, you know, there's still a lot of work to do, and it's going to cost us a lot of money. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, just, I didn't explain why I asked about those budget items, and I'm just trying to give the table legs, basically, to get some of our deputies on the, you know, on the streets rather than having to deal with these, these backfills of the position, so that's, that was my, that's my trajectory, if you will, so.
Supervisor Spatier?
Yeah, I just want to, on the tree mortality thing, I know in May, we do plan on getting another 1.5 million, and I don't know if there's any anticipation for that to be kind of scheduled for a specific purpose, but I would say that that's an opportunity there as well to help with the 2.5%.
Are you talking about cannabis?
Hmm?
Talking about cannabis?
The LATCF.
Oh.
The second payment.
All three theoretically can be used for that.
Yeah.
Right. They're all, yep. Okay. Anything else from the board? Open it to the public? Anyone in the chambers? Come up to the podium and state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Greg Holmes, and I have a letter here I'd like to submit to all of the board members. If anyone could hand it to them. Thank you. This is an issue from the ranch fire of 2018. I own property out past Upper Lake, and in that fire, as it moved through our property, it destroyed all the structures on it. And it's taken quite a while to lever up the funds to rebuild the infrastructure, which finally had just gotten done, in going to the building department to get a permit to restore the power temporarily in order to test the system, the well and the power system. They're refusing to issue a temporary permit because they say they have no record of any inspections that were ever done on this property. So apparently, they've either lost my file or expunged my file of something like $400,000 worth of structures that I built out there. All I'm asking for is for you to persuade the building department to give me a permit to temporarily heat up the power so that I can test the well and prove that all those things work to a potential buyer.
Okay. Is this, I'm sorry, is this regarding our budget conversation that we're having right now?
I'm sorry, then apparently I didn't hear you correctly. I was presenting a personal request.
So we do public input at 9:06?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone in the chambers, and I don't see anybody in the Zoom room. So I can, we can bring this back to the board for action? We've got a few...
Just a quick clarifying question?
Sure.
The Part C for John T. Klaus, this is to approve the receiving of the funds, the 1.96, and do we need to say as amended, or has it already been amended on there?
The resolution's already amended. The reason for the resolution is this fund and budget unit don't exist yet, so the resolution is creating the fund and resolution as well as at the same time appropriating the revenue appropriations.
Okay. Perfect. You. Madam Chair, if you're ready? I offer the resolution, amending resolution number 2022-118 to amend fiscal year 2223 adopted budget by adjusting reserves, fund balance, carryover, revenues, and appropriations.
The resolution has been offered? Can we, roll call, please?
Yeah. Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I offer the resolution, amending resolution 2022-119 to amend the position allocations for fiscal year 202223 to conform to the mid-year budget adjustments.
Yeah, the resolution's been offered? Roll call?
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. So I would like to offer the resolution for, let me read it properly, to adopt resolution, amending adopted budget for fiscal year '22 and '23 to establish Fund 74 John T. Klaus Park, budget unit 7074 John T. Klaus Park.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Spatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Corv.
Thank you both.